Two minutes after twelve, we're coming back to this session. Thanks to the board and everybody. Great conversation this morning. Good questions and everything. I would like to, Dave has got some other things he needs to get to, so if he has addition, if the board is to do with that, can I bring him up first?
Absolutely.
All right. Good, good noon. John, not morning, not afternoon, well, afternoon. As you all know, Commissioner Winters and Melanie Carmine and myself, we've been working on that categorical, categorical exclusion, what I had in, catox, how's that?
C or catox?
Category exclusion.
Category exclusion. Well, we went, we've got three quotes to do, just to get the ball rolling so we can get moving on the Chrissy Grant and the construction of, or the...
Yeah, we give a little bit of a quick overview. Okay, so what we have, we need to get the notice to proceed on the Chrissy Grants. Chrissy Grants, five point six million dollars, as you guys are aware. And whenever we get the notice to proceed, the match starts going towards it. And we have Red Rock that's building a spur and other things going on. So what we needed was a short-term person, agency, client, consultant, whatever you want to say, to be able to help us get through the paperwork and get to NEPA, or ask for categorical exclusion and not have to do NEPA. So Dave has went out and got three quotes for us. Get through this process will allow us to get that notice to proceed. And then, after that, Dave will work with, whatever, there's a lot of people trying to, they want work out of this. We will go out for a full-blown RFP to get a project manager firm to do the whole process once we get that notice to proceed. But this will get that short gap to get dollars start count towards it. He's done a great job. As you see, I think you guys have been briefed, he has brought forward, a local engineering firm had come in as a lowest quote, which is very enthusiastic on my part. That means things need to go on right away. But we gotta get through this part. This is not a program manager. This is getting through and get the paperwork done with the FRA, which is something we have to get done. So, ask us questions. I probably went through that pretty fast. I know you guys individually have talked with Dave and Anne and others. So, that's my overview. Did I miss anything?
No, you said better than I can, as always. I talk on purpose sometimes and I try to get what he says out, but it takes me longer to get there.
You do fine. I've been doing this for a long time, sure.
So anyway, I went out for three quotes. I went to our airport engineering firm. They didn't, they didn't quite give me what I asked of them. They kinda went over the top, so as far as their bid, I'm excluding them from them because as far as they come in at one hundred and seventy-six thousand. But that's, they were wanting to do the whole thing and they didn't have all the information that they needed, that they were just going full. I told them what I needed, but they went extreme, so I excluded them out. We went to our Oregon Shipping Group where we've been working with them through other things. And they came in at fifteen thousand dollars for them to do the categorical exclusion. And then I went to our local Daryl Anderson and he come in at ninety-eight hundred. So I'm recommending to you, Daryl Anderson, to get this started at ninety-eight hundred dollars.
And so I have to add on to that is whenever I hit you guys out of the blue the other day of looking at funds we could go to, to fund this, that's where I was going to. It wasn't committing any funds, that will be committed by us as the board. But thank you guys for that support for us to start, have the option today to do this or not. I really do appreciate the support, David.
So what are you guys actually calling this?
It's a consultant to get through the NEPA process, looking at getting a categorical exclusion so we don't have to do the NEPA process, which would be quite expensive. This, this project, these monies are considered going to be somewhat general maintenance. We're working within the already disturbed rail line. It's not changing any part of the rail. So, we need the expertise of somebody to put that in writing and to write, and get a whole, right agencies to show that we don't have to do a full-blown NEPA, so it's managed to...
Because this has already all been done through the years. We're not changing that. What we're doing is maintenance in period. We're not, we're not gonna be lying, we're not disturbing no other ground. It's already there, so, but we have to prove that with the, with this categorical exclusion, with the NEPA, that we're excluding the full NEPA process.
And so, the big thing is, is as the grant was written and our match, some of the matches going away as projects are getting finished or whatever, means that we have to work harder to find another match. So the sooner we get the notice to proceed, primarily the big one is the railsprout that's not on our side, it's on the Red Rock side, is part of the match, and they've already been through all the, on the private side, all the NEPA and all that. But those dollars expended go towards our match. And that's probably about one point so...
So any dollars spent after we get this, go to our match?
Once we get the notice to proceed from the FRA, yes.
Okay.
And, and we're hoping that at some point, there's parts that we might look at as scalable and other things, but we have to get that, we gotta get through the starting date, get that time started, yes.
So, I would add with my exposure to NEPA, if you guys don't get this categorical exclusion, it'll probably be more money in at least a year before you can even get started on that. So I think it's really important to try to get this.
Is Daryl Anderson, I know Daryl's got a ton of other stuff on his plate, and I've been hearing he's got a big workload. Is he, is he confident that he can get through this in a timely fashion?
Soon as we give him the go-ahead, we get it done.
Okay.
We already had that discussion with him.
What I'm calling the team and Dave and Brad's show, if you, whatever, you wanna call us, be careful, Commissioner Albertson. We, we had an in-depth conversation with Daryl Anderson. He had no idea what any other quotes were anything, but our expectations and everything put us together in a timely fashion.
We talked to him last Friday and you already had him...
Thursday, Thursday and Friday, Thursday.
Oh, it was Thursday, yeah.
So if...
Did you say it was the Brad, Anne and Dave team?
That's bad. No, it was Friday morning. No, you're right, you're right.
Brad, Anne and Dave's show. What did, what did, now you guys gotta keep me in the loop of what I say. I seen you looking, I'd be a little...
It's an acronym. Brad, Anne and Dave's show.
Brad, Anne.
Brand, Brad.
Brad and Dave's show.
You should change it to Dad.
Yeah.
Everything bad has a positive end.
No. Apparently you have not read The Gulag Report by Alexander Solzhenitsyn.
Okay, so, I would, I would recommend that we take the funds out of an industrial fund that's allowable place to take them from, and I'm, correct me, I'm...
Out of where?
Industrial Development Fund. Trying to harbor what we can out of video lottery dollars that fits there also. But when we do, once we get the notice to proceed and find out what dollars can be or not be used, we need to harbor something possibly there for the full RFP process and be able to offer it out there. There's other funds available and stuff too, but I, that's just sort of my theory, doesn't mean that it's the right theory, but...
Okay, so you're looking at taking money out of the lottery dollars as well?
Not, not on this.
Not on this?
But potential. Whenever we get the notice to proceed and the Chrissy dollars come in...
Yeah, that's later.
We might find out that we can use those dollars for the consultant RFP process, but if not, we don't know that for sure right now. So I'm just trying to strategize on, on where the funds come from.
So now you're, so where you're looking right now is that this, what is it, ninety-eight, hundred? Ninety-eight hundred? That's going to be coming out of?
Industrial Development.
Okay.
And that's, I believe that's where you work, that stretch you wanted to go to. And it's an allowable fund for this to be used. So, I'm gonna make the motion if you're comfortable with that.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to the board, to Daryl Anderson, Anderson Engineering, the consultant work for the categorical exclusion, hopefully on the railroad, and the fee will be ninety-eight hundred dollars, taken out of the Industrial Development Fund as allowed.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? I would just like to, once again, commend the board, I worked with Dave and Anne, Melanie and everybody that works on this. This is a milestone. This is big, it's very important to our community. Thank you, guys. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
I was gonna say, Dave, just to make your face fall, but...
So it's the Dave, Anne and Brad Show, just a little that way in this right now, right?
Yeah.
So we get that acronym right.
Thanks, Dave.
No, thank you, guys. So, you owe me one for getting you in here and getting you out.
Thank you.
And then you owe them too, for them...
So they're...
You're the department head, so...
Is that all?
It is the Dave, Anne, Brad Show.
Thanks, guys. All right. Thank you, guys, very much. So, let's rock it on down through here. Youth Mentor Program Donation. I, well, I'll take a little bit of lead on that. That's been a very successful program for a lot of years. I wanna compliment Commissioner Albertson who's sitting on the board. He fully discloses it. He's very eligible to vote and to bring things forward. He personally does not need this. I'd like to thank him for being on the board, seeing that there's issues, addressing those issues, giving an interim director and bringing things forward. I, I know his personality is very conservative, but I would like to support this. I'd like to support this in a way that we basically tell them that this is not norm, don't come to us, except for during budget time. But in this unique situation, we're very supportive of mentor program. I think this will be a start for them to build back. And a lot of the nonprofits and these things, they peak and valley, and I think, I think we're coming out of that valley, going back to the peak, and we can be a part of that, so. But I'm interested in hearing your take on it.
Well, I wanna, I just wanna make it clear that these are community development dollars. It's not a loan, as, as it has been in the past. It's not a loan where they would pay back. They're just looking for dollars because they don't have a cash flow where they're, they'd be able to pay those dollars back. This is a flat-out five thousand dollars. But, in just doing the research and talking with Anne, I think that the community development dollars is an appropriate place to take this, take this...
Is or not is?
Is. And, and because the normal amount, the like standard, you know, like maximum amount is about thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're only looking at five thousand dollars here, and there's over two hundred thousand dollars in that fund, I don't believe that that's a substantial concern to that budget. So I think it's more than appropriate, and I would support your motion to, if you, if you have a, if you're making a motion to...
I would love to.
Go forward, yes.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
I would second that motion.
I, I appreciate what you said. I'll make the motion to support the mentor program and a grant out of the community development loan, not a loan, but it's a grant, which we rarely do, but we have the ability as commissioners to do that, for five thousand dollars. And for them to note that for funding in the future, they need to come during budget time, and we would love to see them become sustainable. So, thank you.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
I'd like to say, so, that was brought up in the meeting, I brought it up in the meeting, that it's not acceptable for me to, you know, to allow, not knowing when to come for the grant, or just blowing the grant people off. And so, they will be back next year in the spring.
Within time, yeah.
So we'll know, and we can budget for it. And not only us, but anybody else that gives them grants, and to be cognizant of when those things happen. And so, their new director will know next year when to come to us, when to go to the Portland Trailblazers, when to go to the Ford Family Foundation, you know, so we're not, so we don't have this problem.
Correct. Well, we'll have our projections and our budget, and, you know, we do accept open requests whenever we have a little bit of extra money. We haven't done that for a few years, but we'll know our projections, and then, you know, we don't want lying a mile long if people want extra money, but whenever there's things that we've funded in the past, I sort of think they take priority, and this is one funded in the past.
I thank you, guys, for supporting the youth mentor program, not only financially, but, you know, we need mentors, so, you guys, think about that.
Okay.
Kathy Miles probably put you up.
But she would be proud of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Let's see, our next item...
Make sure the ESG folds, sir.
MOU, Lake County Justice and Community, Clamott County Sheriff's Action Consideration, this was for the jail beds, correct?
Yes. Three hundred and sixty-five jail beds for two people, up to three.
Would entertain a motion. We've done this for many, many years.
I'll make the motion to accept the MOU between Lake County Community Justice and the Clamott County Sheriff's Office for jail beds for sixty-one thousand dollars fiscal impact, which I wanna make note that that did not entertain.
So, correct.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter into, enter into the MOU of Clamott County, further discussion? That's a great tool for jail and for our operations, at a reasonable cost. All in favor? Did you get a second, Brad?
Yeah.
Oh, pardon me.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
I didn't hear it.
You got a second.
Thank you.
Our next item is Right-of-Way Easement Agreement, New Sun. We tabled this, Melanie has worked, I believe, James too, or whoever, all worked on this to work with our road official.
Yep.
And I believe it's been ran back by legal counsel...
Correct.
Multiple times. Do you have any more to add to it, or?
Nope, it all looks good. I think it, it's more than fine, yeah.
Okay, so would entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the right-of-way easement agreement.
One second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the right-of-way easement agreement between Lake County and New Sun Solar, am I correct on that?
Yes.
New Sun Cascade.
Cascade.
I and T Company LLC.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First Amendment, OHA Agreement, fifty-nine eight one eight, Title X Funding. And, let me get to it. So this was in public health, correct?
Correct. Basically, the state isn't willing to fulfill their obligation anymore, and they're putting it on the federal government in order to fund, but nothing changed. The funding is still there, it's just coming from a different source.
Would you change? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the First Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority intergovernmental agreement for financing of public health services.
I'll second the motion.
Is that, no, no, you're fine. You are absolutely fine. No, it's not that.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept agreement number one five nine eight one eight, First Amendment to Oregon Health Authority, two thousand nineteen, twenty-one intergovernmental agreement for the financing of public health services. Any further discussion? We're waiting for it, James. Give it up, give it up.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What abstain? I abstain.
All right. Next item...
You were the one that brought this forward.
I didn't bring it forward. I mean, they, they put it forward, I just, I just, I mean, they do whatever they want. We don't really have an option, do we?
No, we don't, that's the problem.
Yeah.
But the thing is, is that...
Your, your statement is loud and unclear. Meeting minutes, here we go. We got Work Session eight six, Regular Session eight seven, Special Session eight eight, Special Session eight thirteen, Work Session eight twenty, and Regular Session eight twenty-one. Did I miss any? Very good job on our agenda the other day.
Thank you.
You guys have fully reviewed these and we're ready to go.
As much as possible. Yes.
I abstain.
Our working motion is accept the notes as presented.
I'm abstaining from commenting. So, our motion is second to accept them as presented?
Yes. I will, I will second that motion.
There being no further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye, motion carries. Sorry, if you guys did have a discussion, it would be fine. Legal updates? We do not have legal here, executive session, no, executive session today.
Do we do any legal updates?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything you'd like to do?
Hold on just one second.
Sure.
Don't we have a memorandum of understanding of the... We're gonna find it?
Yes.
Can I get your vote, for the record?
Pardon me?
Can I get you to recall your vote? For the main, you abstained?
No, no, I'm abstaining on commenting on this one.
He's just muddy in the water.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, it was three ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So this is in regards to Class. I did send you, sent all three an email. I will be traveling to Clamott tomorrow to meet with Christina Zamora, and I, tomorrow afternoon. I'll be here in the morning, but I'll be leaving tomorrow afternoon sometime after lunch and headed to Clamott. I caught Melanie in the hallway and kind of filled her in on a few things. They got back to me early this morning with answers to all three of my questions that I gave you all updates on yesterday. And I forwarded that email on to you, so it's there for you guys' consideration if you would just like to see that, and see how they answered that. Jim Bailey was included as well. I have a phone call with him at two o'clock today where we will discuss this matter further. I think we're moving in a good direction where we can at least, you know, where things will become clearer to us, to, if we call for a special session next, next week to decide on anything, if that, if I have a recommendation for that.
If it's time, so you're absolutely correct.
So, aside from that, you have the document in your email. One of the things I would, I don't mind noting here in a public meeting, because I, I think it, I think it's important to note, the ESG that was brought before us is for, it's an Energy Solutions Grant. That was what was originally brought for us to sign and approve as county commissioners for Lake County. And, being that we haven't been a governing body, governing board for Class for the last ten years, it did, it caused some questions for us to question how they got their funding prior to that, and we were unsure as to how that would be possible, being that we haven't had any affiliation with them for ten years. Class was able to dig this document up dating May seventeen, two thousand seventeen, where Lake County Commissioner did approve and sign a document for the ESG in seventeen, and the signature on it is the Chairman at that time, Commissioner, former Commissioner Dan Shown, who wrote and approved the ESG for Class's funding of the Emergency Service Grant. Just wanted to update you guys on that. I forwarded on, I have been unable to find any original copy of that here in our records within the courthouse, still looking. So, anyway, just wanted to update you on.
Very good. I would like to tell you thank you sincerely for your work on this, to help get services into Lake County and be represented appropriately. I would encourage you, you probably already reached out, if, if you need to go early and you can set it up, or you can meet with Commissioner Donnie Boyd, so we're sort of talking.
Correct. And I, I intend to do that as well. I will probably send Donnie Boyd an email this afternoon after I have a discussion with our legal counsel. A lot of this, I'm kind of working through to try and understand what had transpired in the last few years. And that, of course, is from two thousand seventeen. I was able to find a record of a commissioner from Clamott County, who is no longer a commissioner, in two thousand fifteen approved the same document. And it doesn't appear to make us liable for anything regarding Class. Their request for appointing someone to their tripartite board is a separate request, and, and any, and they are trying, I guess what Christina is saying, she's not asking us to be a governing board for Class at this point. They're simply, simply approval for this one individual grant, the ESG.
So, to get that energy current, they have to have the...
They have to have a commissioner from one of the counties pass a, a sign-off on it, and it happens every two years, which is why there was one in two thousand fifteen from Clamott and one in two thousand seventeen from Lake. And now it's two thousand nineteen, and they're looking for that approval again for that Energy Service Grant. But it doesn't appear to make, hold Lake County liable. But I will be discussing this with Jim Bailey because I actually have more questions than I have had answered.
You clarified some of the muddy waters for me because of, they've gotten muddy, there's been more than one request. I've sort of pulled them all together, and you clarified that for me quite a bit just right here. This is an individual request for just this specific...
For a specific purpose.
Yeah, and I pulled that into a full class, and then we have a request for representatives to sit on the class governing board. So that helps me a lot. I get, I guess, I would say this is, is this funding better utilized in Lake County if a different agency was to apply and we signed for them to bring those funds into Lake County, or is it Class? As we've seen some stumbling over the years, we heard stumbling from some of our staff this day, where Class is head. And I'm, I'm just, you know, I keep going back to our senior center, is maybe this needs to be a contract just right with our senior center and take Class out of it, maybe. I hate to say that at open in a meeting, but maybe that's the way that we get those services to...
They would have to apply for that grant, though. They would have to apply for that.
If Class appointed...
Class has applied for it, and our senior center has not.
Copy, they have a two-year window to apply, possibly. I, I really do appreciate your work.
No, that's fine.
What you just said makes a lot of sense that you have to apply for it, and you have to have those skills and things.
Yeah, and, and I think actually, in conversation actually with Melanie, she brought up an excellent point. And I think I, I just put it out to you, I don't know if I'd ask for consensus of the board today, but I think that if we were to ever approve something like this, and we were to sign off on it, we would want, I imagine, we would all want to make sure that whatever those services are, that they be delivered to Lake County. And I, and we would like to have some sort of assurances that that would be the case, because if we're going to sign off and approve funds coming in, and they could get this grant, we want to make sure that a portion of that, if not all of it, as far as I'm concerned, should go to Lake County. And if Donnie Boyd would like to sign, okay, fine, he can have it, he can have it for Clamott, so.
Copy. Thank you for doing the work, yeah, taking trouble over there, and everything.
Yeah, I think we traveled over there and everything. Appreciate it very much. I do want to say one thing, though. If it comes to the point that we do become a governing board again of Class, that my recommendation would be one of us on that board and not.
Oh, absolutely.
And not someone else.
Well, I, I guess I'm trying to follow what you're saying. They have their nonprofit and their boards set up and they want representation on that board. We in the past said, no, we're not the governing board. We don't, we, if they reorganize, redo their bylaws and change where they're going to have Clamath and Lake County Commissioners as a governing board, that'd be similar to school ed or school act is that it would take a majority of those two commissioners from each county to make business happen and that's go back to the old days. I'm not real fond of doing that, but if there was reorganization and thought that way.
Well, I, I would just, any kind of representation of any sort should be from the commissioners and not somebody else representing the county.
You've got a hundred and fifty percent of my vote being one of us.
And that, that's all, that's all I want to say about.
That's all you're going to say about?
Yeah. Would it be safe to say that if, regardless of where we go from here, if, if we did end up at a, at a point where we needed to have some representation within Class or on one of the boards of Class, that it would be someone that is already representing Lake County to where the, that the people, like an elected official that the people trust, that represents the entire county or someone that the board trusts and the people trust? Would it be safe to say that? That is the direction that you would like to go? All right, I have a consensus of the board.
You're the first one.
You are that guy.
You are that guy?
Oh, thank you.
If, any, anything else?
No, and I will update you guys as we go.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your last meeting was a very good meeting, I believe. We gave extra time to our senior representatives. I think there's great questions. Good luck to you in the future.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All in.
Thank you, man.
You bet.
God bless you.
We will adjourn at twenty-five minutes to one.